Okay. Good morning, everyone. This is Knox County Commissioners's regular session on April 22, 2025. Our first order of business is our CDBG public hearing number one for fiscal year 2025 programs. We will turn it over to Jillian Flowers. We do, there is a sheet that people needed to sign, so we'll have a record of those in attendance for this hearing. And so we will turn it over to Jillian to instruct us on what the public needs to know.
Absolutely. So, good morning. I'm Jillian Flowers of the Village of Danville, Ohio, and we work with the county commissioners on their grant programs. So today is our first public hearing. It's one of the two that we will hold. And the purpose of this public hearing is to allow the public to understand what kind of programs are available to Knox County and also what programs that we will apply for. So part of CDBG, there are some federal rules that we have to follow. And so to qualify a project, they have to be low to moderate income folks. So the national and state objectives. The Ohio Department of Development administers numerous CDBG home and related grants for small entitlement communities throughout Ohio, and they must benefit the low to moderate income folks. So Ohio estimates this year that there will be approximately $105 million in federal PY-25 funds. And of this amount, about $45 million will be CDBG and $27 million will be home.
Jillian, why don't you tell everybody what CBDG is?
Yes, Community Development Loan Grant. And that is a grant administered by the, it comes to the state of Ohio by the Department of Development, and then it comes down to the local level.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the grants that are available in PY-25 is what they call an ARPA, the Residential Urban Infrastructure Grant, and that's up to a hundred, or $750,000 grant amount. Critical infrastructure up to $500,000, economic development up to $500,000, and the target opportunity, which is a grant program that doesn't fit the other buckets. So they created a kind of like a priority program for the state, which is up to $250,000. The first round for the CDBG Critical Infrastructure Grant is due on June 11 of this year. All other applications are open cycle beginning July 1 until funds run out. And then all programs have a 26 month grant period. So we will talk about the project that has been submitted to us through the Village of Danville and kind of get those specifics moving forward. Past performance, it's on the agenda. We've completed several different projects with the county, one being the ADA compliant ramp over here at the courthouse. We've done several projects with Danville in the past, as well as Martin's Grove. We have a critical infrastructure project underway right now that's going well. And like I said, there will be another public hearing to discuss all of the programs available. And they will also, the county will be required to sign off on different application documentation. That will be in June. And then we will note, we will publish the notice of all public hearings. You know, but it's still available on the website and it's a good thing. So because this is Knox County's non-allocation year, when I came in February, I kind of talked about this allocation year, non-allocation year is a non-allocation year. So this is an open cycle grant that we're talking about, Critical Infrastructure Grant, and it is up to $500,000, and we will apply to that in June. So this is a competitive program, and we think that is strong enough to be able to go through the process. So I will have you to talk a little bit about this project or whoever wants to go.
Jillian, before you do that, so the, the public hearings being published in the Mount Vernon News, is that still a requirement? Because I know there's some law changes on that.
It is required for our programs. We've asked for some guidance from the state of Ohio on that. And as of right now, all the federal requirements will still remain, so we will.
So federal versus state would be the difference there, apparently, right?
Yes, yes.
When you say competitive, this isn't a for sure loan. This is something that other people are going to be applying for as well, Jillian?
Correct, yes.
So whoever has, brings the best program to the table?
Yes.
Who makes that ultimate decision?
The Department of Development. Yeah, there is this scoring criteria that they follow. And so you have to score, you know, a minimum score.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, so, so please say your, your name and.
I'm Joe Stackler, I'm the demonstrator of Danville.
Okay.
The reason we're applying for this is our system's been put in in the late 50s. We've had a lot of major breaks throughout the years. Yes, that's our, we did our hydrant flushing last year. We found that a lot of the hydrants are, and then so the intersection of the system is not operable. So it's a lot of fire protection for the residents. Pretty critical, I think.
Do you have an estimated cost as to what it's going to take to complete that? Oh, we expected you guys to have this all memorized.
I tried. We were pushing it to the limits of what we can allocate and ask for, only because we're not quite, if you will, if you've been through Danville, the top of the hill, we've had monies put into the system there to bring the system down the hill to where we're at now. The distance almost to the bridge from our telephone booth on Market Street is, is parts that need to be replaced that have so many breaks in it and where the fire hydrants are somewhat inoperable. So we're going to go as far as that money will, will stretch us to get to that point. Our ultimate goal is to try and get into the neighborhood on the other side of the bridge and do a neighborhood revitalizing of the systems down there.
The bridge you're talking about going towards the grocery store, that?
Down towards the grocery store, that neighborhood. Actually, on, on both sides of Market, both neighborhoods are in need of, of.
And do you plan on applying for OPWC grant money?
We have in the past. We're, we're trying to kind of balance some, some of it out with what we might be able to receive from your generosity and go from there. We have had some opportunities for that, but we don't have it currently in place.
Well, I know that issue two is on the ballot, so people need to go vote for that so that Danville can get some money from that, that initiative. So what's your next step after that, after you get this fixed? Do you have other projects that are kind of in line for what you need to do there in Danville?
We do, we have a storm sewer issued throughout the whole village that needs to address. Most, most of it is on Market Street and down in the, in the lower neighborhood, south of town. There's issues there with that. There's also, we've got an open, if you will, an open ended culvert ditch system where it's not safe really to travel by foot to the, to the grocery store, to the general stores that we have down there. So we're in hopes to close all that and put in sidewalks so that people that are traveling down there that do business can walk, walk through safely. Otherwise, they're either walking in the street or walking off to the side where it's, it's not really safe.
Jennifer, if I follow this, it looks like there's seven. Jillian, excuse me. If I follow this, it looks like this money and this project probably starts next year if it's approved. Is that where we're at?
That's a great question. The kind of the process of what we follow, applications will go in in June. The Department of Development always dates their grant hearing in September 1. And that's not always when we get them, and that's mainly there. So from September to, let's say, like January, February, we get through a marketing process, and we ask for a list of funds. So once all that's typically completed, then typically like, let's say, February, the funds will be released, and then we can start the project and have about almost two construction years to go out.
Right.
So, so in that process of, when you say release of funds, are, is Danville able then to go ahead and have all the engineering done and then get reimbursed for engineering for that after the February 1 date?
So Danville is using an engineer, so whatever costs they incur through that, they're responsible for. So we would just be paying for construction costs for this grant. Otherwise, we would have to sort of cure for an engineer, and it kind of, you know, pulls up the process a little bit longer. So that's why I always encourage that the folks always use an engineer if they can.
We're, we're not assuming anything that we're automatically get this, you know, give it to us from you guys. But we are in the works with our engineer, constantly looking at, okay, can you work this up? And get, get our drawings set up, get, get a base for the shovel ready for if that is a possibility, then we're ready, ready to go.
Okay.
And I will say, as far as this project is concerned, they have all the documentation that they need. They have support letters, they have pictures on the ground. We are simply waiting for the forms to be available for the city of Ohio to start working on this and completing them. So they are at a place where they're ready to submit.
Okay. And I assume those forms will be available at least by the 1st of June? They don't wait till June 11th?
Yeah, we've been told on a 14th. So I will submit what they call a pre-application, like May 1st or, you know, it's between May 1st and May 30th is the deadline. I will send them in so that they can say, yes, this is a good project, we'll look at it forward. We also are getting a new platform at the state level, so they'll be doing training, make working as well. So we're super excited about that, you know, less than 30 days to put in applications. Awesome. Another thing that I did want to mention, all the ACSA that came out last year, and so that changed.
And that data means what?
So that data just talks about the current LMI areas within your, your community. So a community that is LMI by the census data would be Martin's Grove. Danville is no longer LMI by the census data, so they're in concern. Same with the boroughs where it came in, they're, they're just considered there.
And that's the whole population of the village when they use a low median income source?
Yeah, there is a population. It's, you know, population divided by LMI communities, and then the state kind of provided a metric, and then they spit out how much money is available. So I did want to let you know that Knox County, their allocation amount for 26 will be $156,000. So that went down by $2,000. Many communities, you know, they lost maybe $6,000, some communities gained. It's just a matter of population growth and everything that they're seeing in the state. So I did want to let you know that next year will be $156,000.
Lost a little bit. So is Danville the only community that's asking you to help out with grant money this year?
Yes, that is correct. I know that Freddie then will be coming to the table at some point. They're not nearly ready. They are kind of at step one. So I anticipate that they'll be ready next year.
Any other things that Danville or Jillian you'd like to share?
We did, we did, we've already had the engineering on this project. Everybody is ready, so we're ready to get it.
Okay.
Most importantly, are you ready for that new astroturfist?
Yeah, that's our next one. We have some great deal of concern with infiltration into our water system, our treatment system. We've been very diligent to try to track that down. Go probably the first week of in office, I think I'll load it. If you're passionate.
They're out playing. I'd have to go back on any.
If you essentially would, would think about Danville as a swamp area, it, it really doesn't look like that, but it's very, it's lots and lots of water that's running through that village. It's running from the top of the village down through the south end and out to that area where the looms are at. So when we have our storm sewers and things like that that are breaking down, that's where all that water ends up, you know, getting here further into that area. So by us finding those, those breaks, finding those, those water systems reverting have been very crucial. It makes EPA happy.
Yeah, our friend's the EPA.
Yeah.
Well, I know that over at least the last five years, you've been going throughout the village and putting in new water lines and things of that nature. Are you, have you also put in new meters for homes to be able to determine where there might be some leaks or?
You know, we have been upgrading our meters throughout the years as we've been according.
Yes.
So yeah, we've been pretty well, we're about three quarters way through on meters.
Okay.
So this year we should have all that up to date.
We also have the mapping of, we've got our, our system's camera. So we've got a photograph to, all that film and stuff can be put into where we can have some good maps of where everything's at. It used to be you got to be around, as you may know. The oldest person there in the room knew where all the pipes were at and where the tanks were at. You know, we can't, can't always rely on that anymore. Got to have those maps to be able to tell us where we need to go to. So yeah, we were working on that as well, and true, we've got that.
Yeah, that, and that's important. So Jillian, yes?
I did want to mention that I pulled up the cost estimate, and the engineer doesn't have it at 470 units, and that's the amount that they will receive. So we did go through this, we had a couple meetings to talk through the needs. Some of the needs have been addressed since even last year when we were talking during this meeting. That was more around, I think, $750,000 or so, if I remember. And so they've been able to address some of those needs and then also scale down to match that this would be 100% covered by grant funds that funded.
Great. Well, and, you know, a lot of people don't realize how long it takes for a project like this to be able to get done. And it's like, you know, in our homes, if we have a leak, we go ahead and get it fixed. In your, in your home, you have to figure out, you know, who's going to pay for it? Where are we going to get the money if we don't have it? And, and the engineers get involved and, and, you know, their, engineers are great, but sometimes they also show you the hiccups that you didn't count on. And so that's, we appreciate Jillian and your organization to help Knox County. And you guys have done a wonderful job over the years and appreciate that. And we're excited about Danville with this opportunity, and hopefully it, it competes well so that we can get that done. So that'd be a good thing. Other things you want to share before we?
Just mentioned earlier, we had several meetings, we have been here. There are other meetings, but many, I wouldn't be surprised if we would see a laterization grant come out in these conversations next year. So that's something that we're looking at, which is understanding at least quarter for activities in the target area. So conversations are ongoing, there's always needs. So I anticipate that we will see that next year.
Do those programs require any matching or in-kind?
They do not. However, you can use your allocation dollars if, let's say, the project and the grant funds don't match up. Always use your allocation dollars and manage others' that. But, you know, it's something that I think the state wants to see, but it's been a little bit required. So they, they extended the training that we had last week that they don't really look at anymore, but I can get at its best people apart, unless then they have some skin in the game and they care about the projects they're asking for.
And does this grant that we talked about this morning require any matching funds?
Yes.
So it could be 100% money for them. And they could also say, instead of $470,000, that you're only going to get $400, and you have to figure it out from there? Has that happened to them?
Um, I suppose that's possible. I would imagine that they would cover the entire ask. The, I guess the issue of that would be is that they weren't really going to fund the 470 that they're funding on, going to fund, question of all.
Okay.
So, you know, we will ask for the maximum amount possible.
Okay, good.
And the cost estimate, it just straightens the thing for it.
Okay, great. Is there anybody else?
Well, I wanted to put out there for the future, like that revitalization of the community on the lower area of town. And that neighborhood, talking about putting in restroom facilities in our park. As, as it used to be years ago, it was a state highway stopping point. We want to kind of bring it back to that a little bit where folks could take a break, replace the other restrooms, kind of, you know, order down a bit, if you will, a bit more facility that could be used. And hopes that we might be able to fund that at some point and have that closure anyway where it can be seen and used, the travel that's coming through.
Yeah, and I know that we're working on the, the bike trail going through there and a bridge.
The bike trail is also a big, big project of ours that someone, we're going to have to find a way to get it across Market Street safely into the park area behind the village office and some of our storefronts that are there. And there'll be a trail then through that area connecting the Heaton Trail and there goes again that trail through that process.
Uh, other people want to talk about the, the grant or have questions? Anyone want to talk about the guardians or? So if there are no other things on this, I will close this portion of the hearing. And then we, at 10:30, we do have the comprehensive plan at public meeting. But before that time, Jason, do you want to go through the, the four, at least the four items there or?
Yeah, I guess if you want to break the reception, let the people that were here for the hearing.
Yes.
They don't need to sit through the restroom like they need to.
You don't think, okay, yeah, so we'll, we'll take a break. For those who, you know, have finished their business here, we'll, we'll allow you to go ahead and, and excuse yourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
This is a change of order in around $3,553.50, and this is to pricing to upsize the water service to one and a half inch lines.
A motion to approve that.
Second.
And those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're just finishing the winter, but the county engineer has a participation agreement here for the road salt contracts that will be awarded in 2025 before next year.
Motion to approve.
And those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we have an agreement with TerraCon Consultants for the construction, inspection, and administration for the county engineer. This is for the Pleasant Valley Road Bridge project, and this is for $77,600 to do that inspection.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
And those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I think most people know that on that bridge, it's, it's going to be one of those things that is going to start June, July, and, and the bridge is going to be out for like six months, so.
Then the last thing we have is to approve the contract documents for the Danville Henry Road project to law of general contracting. This is for $3,082, or I'm sorry, $3,000, $3,082,000. Yeah, I mean, around $3,082,501.70. So it's a big one, and there's a lot of items in here you're going to need to sign. So take your time on this once you're approved.
Take a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Second. And those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then the bill that's for today, we can get that onto the audit.
I think I sign all those.
I do.
Yeah, that's all except. Yeah, I sign just those.
Yeah, anytime we sign contracts, it's been, and this is almost as bad as doing contracts for a copier. Lot of signatures. Okay, maybe we'll give those to Barry.
Here.
He'll be here a while. So Penny, you have on this a date, is there a date at the top I need to print too?
Okay.
Thank you. You're going to sign that?
Yeah.
You want some of these?
In the next third quarter, we've got just a couple minutes, we'll make use of it. So we can do, just a couple updates I have. The steel's been installed in the back entrance, you've probably seen that. So that was all going up, started going up yesterday. That's moving along well. The courthouse, the courthouse heat pumps are in progress, they're, they're working, and that project shouldn't wrap up soon. So we're good there. I did meet last week with Terry Wise from the Village of Centerburg. We talked about, he has a high school track, and we're making progress, and I think that's going positively. And we're going to meet again soon, and I think we should hopefully get something for you to look at and the village to look at, and hopefully get an agreement in place on that. The evidence room expansion out of the sheriff's office, we were out there last week. And the electric, we've established where the electric engineer was there. We now know where we're going to get the electric and the existing building out to that structure. And then also run it to our maintenance shop while we're helping out in the areas.
Then we have to interior rehab some of that building.
We are, the, the plans are being finalized, but that was kind of the last thing. The architect was the electric engineer on site verified, we're, we're ready to source the power. So we identified that, and I think we're good to go. So we should be seeing some final plans on that.
Good.
That's all I have for today. We can start here on that.
Okay.
Do you have the signature?
That's not signed.
Yeah, you got to, that's all right.
Did you sign? Yeah, it's okay. So on our agenda, our 10:30 public meeting for the Knox Comprehensive Plan Together Knox, we are having that public meeting right now at 10:30 as assigned. We, there is an updated version on the website for those people. I think those that I've talked to have gone over it and are satisfied with the, where all that is. Are there people here in the audience that want to address the comprehensive plan?
This is hearing number two.
This is hearing number two, and this will be our final hearing. We will at probably next week, not this week, complete the, our process as the county commissioners. I understand that the city of Mount Vernon will do theirs in the first part of May. And then once the approval process by the commissioners and by the city of Mount Vernon, they will be able to do a final copy of it and present that to the public. So if there's no one wanting to say anything about that, I will, I will pause in case there are people who want to address that. Are there, are there any individuals here who want to say anything about the comprehensive plan?
Next, there's the only thing I'll say is, are you wanting us to bring that forward next Tuesday on the 29th for adoption?
Yes. Good. So that will conclude that part of the comprehensive plan meeting. I have a statement that we had our prosecutor put together for us as commissioners. I did mention earlier about issue two being on the ballot. If you haven't voted, get your high knees over there and get that, get that done. Because it is money that certainly benefits the townships and the villages and the city of Mount Vernon as well as the county. And it's a bond program that is, that the voters vote on every 10 years. And it is a program that every township, everybody in Knox County has definitely benefited from.
And it does not affect your taxes.
Yeah. So want to read this statement? The Board of Commissioners has been asked to comment on the pending proceedings against Commissioner Cassie's son. The situation is personal to her and the board will refrain from making any statements. She is an independently elected official and she alone can determine her ability to serve under these circumstances. And that is our statement on that. At this time, are there others that want to take their three minutes to address the county commissioners? Yes, and then state your name and your address.
My name's Martha Tracy, I live at E. White, Orleans, Wayster, Golden, Ohio.
Where ma'am, I'm sorry. Where, Ohio?
Howard, Ohio, House of Allen. I'm here today to ask the commissioners to refine how the Knox Alert system is used to make the messages more succinct and provide more information. I think it was last week, and I was trying to find it, I couldn't find it today, but there was a fire on Lightfoot Road last week. I don't know if I was assuming it was a house fire, I don't know, they didn't say that. The alert said something to the effect of, we have to use a lot of water. Water may be drowned for 24 hours. Okay, what does that mean? Does that mean don't use the water? Does it mean boil the water? Does it mean, don't worry about it, it just doesn't mean anything? So it's almost like, why would they even let us know that if we don't know what actually we as water consumers need to take? So I would just ask that the way those messages are put out to perhaps either provide more information or provide a link that would now maybe a news release of some kind. I know they can't always do a news release when there's a working fire, of course. But even another sentence to say, please boil your drinking water or your bathing water for the next 24 hours to be safe in case there's any compromise to the waters or something along those lines. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you. Yeah, that's, there has been some discussion about how that happened. And so our, our person that works with the fire department and also with our water, there are discussions going on there. And I, I understand that part of the issue for that was we had two fire trucks siphoning off of fire hydrants at the same time. And they're supposed to not do double drawl, and that's part of why it went down. But the clarification of the message, that will be forwarded on and we will see about getting that addressed.
Oh, do you, did you understand my concern?
I do, I do.
Like if I had a baby and I was making formula, would I not use the tap water or some water or what? So, thank you.
Yes.
I think that was a very fast response because it happened without knowing, it was quick. And by the time we figured out what was going on, we just, I think, our water and sewer manager just wanted to get something out there that said there's an issue. But we'll definitely get with it.
And they resolved the issue, not to do that again.
Do you want to say a thing? Okay. So at this point, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we stay in adjournment this time. Thank you, everyone.